Call to order the regular meeting of the Village of Hinsdale Board of Trustees for Tuesday, June 11, 2024. Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item up is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 21, 2024. Can I have a motion?
We have to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees of May 21, 2024.
Okay. Any changes?
I gave Emily some typos.
Okay.
That was it for me.
All right. We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashman?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
The president's report, uniquely Thursdays, uniquely Thursday, summer concert session in Burlington Park will start Thursday from June, from Thursday from seven to nine, from six to nine PM this Thursday. The Fourth of July parade will begin at 10:00 AM on Sixth Street in Garfield on the Fourth of July. There will also be events in Burlington Park from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM that include an arts and crafts fair and family-friendly entertainment and activities. Next item up, I have the honor and pleasure of swearing in two new police officers today. One is Ian Simpson. Ian, where's Ian? Okay, he's back there. And the other one is Sergio Breones. Pronounce that right. And today attending with Ian is his mother Susan, his father Jason, and his fiance Gail. And with Sergio is his mother Patricia, his father Sergio, his brother Diego, his girlfriend Jasmine, and his sister Emily. So I'd like to first, before I swear them in, tell the trustees and the residents a little bit about each of them, and then we can swear them in individually. For first Ian, Ian graduated from Lewis University in Romeoville with a bachelor's degree in psychology and a minor in criminal justice. He was born and raised in the southwest suburbs. He has prior experience working as a security officer for a little company of Mary Hospital in Evergreen Park. He's a recent graduate of the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy. Sergio is a graduate from Aurora University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and MBA in sports management. He was born and raised in the northwest suburbs. Sergio is bilingual and fluent in Spanish. He's a recent graduate of the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy. So Ian, why don't you come up first, and I will swear you in? Stand in the middle there. Mr. Mayor, right man, repeat after me.
Aye.
State your name.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Having been appointed a police officer?
Having been appointed a police officer.
In the Village of Hinsdale?
In the Village of Hinsdale.
In the counties of the Page and Cook?
The counties of the Page and Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois?
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Police officer?
Police officer.
According to the best my ability?
According to the best my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Sergio. Sir Pete Efferman?
Aye. Hi Sergio Breones.
Having been appointed a police officer?
Having been appointed a police officer.
In the Village of Hinsdale?
In the Village of Hinsdale.
The counties of the Page and Cook?
The counties of the Page and Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois?
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Police officer?
A police officer.
According to the best my ability?
According to the best my ability.
Congratulations. You guys are joining a great department, and good luck. I'm sure we'll see you around. The family members, if you want to, since the, if you want to stick around for the rest of me, you can. Do you want, do you, should we usually take pictures for this?
Yeah.
We're gonna take a picture if you don't mind.
No, I, I, do we usually do that?
Yeah.
I think we usually do that. Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay. Why don't you bring your friends come up? So Sergio, sorry, I forgot.
Remain seated.
Little chief? What do you chief say? Somebody's gotta organize this. Yeah, get a little. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to citizens petition. Any citizen wishing to speak on any matter on or off the agenda? Now's the time. There's another time at the end of the hearing, or hearing, end of the proceeding. Anybody? Hearing non, that takes us to...
Tom.
Sorry.
Yeah, if you're doing on or off the agenda?
Yeah, on or off the agenda.
Okay, great. Thanks. I'm Brian Richards. Good to see you all again. We're seventeen years in Hinsdale and now live at 241 East First Street. Not here to make an impassioned plea or an emotional argument tonight. I'm just here to talk about facts and to correct a few misstatements that have been made at recent board meetings. Before I do so, however, I do want to thank the board and the village for installing the Jersey barriers at Fuller's Car Wash following the last board meeting. It's not a perfect solution, but it's progress, and I think that helps public safety. Also, I will note that the bollards that were discussed at the May 7th board meeting have still not been installed, or at least they weren't as of yesterday when I walked by. At Fuller's Car Wash, we're in the height of summer season, maximum, you know, pedestrians, strollers, joggers on the sidewalk on the west side of Lincoln, which remains open and doesn't contain any warnings. At the May 7th board meeting, Chairman Colley, you said that new bollards would be installed as quickly as humanly possible, and that as soon as the bollards arrived, the Fullers are going to dig up the property and install them. It's my understanding that as of last week, the bollards had been delivered and were sitting on village property, but they've still not been installed. So my question for the board is, when will the bollards be installed?
So I'm glad you came, because I have a couple of questions for you, too.
Okay.
So we're still working with an engineer, and we had some difficulty with one of the engineers, but we're getting a certified, engineers certify the crash-tested bollards, okay? So...
Right, which...
Crash, crash-rated. And I, and I, and I am sticking by that they're sufficient, and we're going to get somebody, engineer. So I'm making sure we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is on this, but, but, you know, right now, I think that there's no safety issue because the Jersey barriers are there. We're working to do this the right way, so it makes, may take some time. We have the bollards here at the village, and as soon as we get them certified, we will have them installed. But I have a question for you.
Okay.
So one of the things that the Fullers raised with me is they said that what the Richards really want is to shut down the business. And to the extent that the business is shut down, why should we spend $100,000, whatever it is, to install the bollards? Is your aim to shut down Fullers? Is that...
Absolutely.
Okay. So the other thing that the...
Which is why we, our lawyers asked for them...
So you can understand, I mean, don't you agree that that's a legitimate concern on their part, that they don't want to install something if at the end of the day, they are going to put a business that is not a car wash that may be a restaurant or something else? Wouldn't make sense to install bollards costing $100,000 if it's going to be a different business there at some point, right?
It's operating today.
Right. But, but you would agree that if, in the short term, the business would change, it wouldn't make sense to put the bollards? If that's their concern, I assume you, you agree that that is a legitimate concern?
I, I agree it's a legitimate concern for them.
Okay, so the other...
But it, it's the board's obligation to ensure public safety.
Right, okay. The other thing that they said, and I had a call from Doug Fuller's yesterday, so that's why I'm glad you came. He told me that they're willing to consider closing down the car wash if you drop your lawsuit. So it seems to me it's entirely within your power to, to close down that car wash and have something else there. And I told you that the village can't do that, but he's saying he's willing to do that. So it seems like in a very short period of time, you could have an agreement with him if he was, and he says he's willing to talk about that. I'm not representing he will do it, but he said he'll talk about it, that if you will drop your lawsuit, he will close down the car wash. So it seems to me that to the extent that your main goal is to close down the car wash, that's something that you could accomplish in relatively short order.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we should negotiate a civil lawsuit here at this meeting.
No, I'm telling you that, that to the extent that you say that that's your primary...
I didn't, so if, if you watch the, so there's a, at the Clifford Law Office website, there's, we had a press conference when we filed the civil lawsuit.
Right.
December 13, 2023, and we talked there about our three objectives.
Right.
We have three objectives. The truth, accountability, meaning the Fullers, right? And I'll get to a little bit of that later, and public safety.
Right.
Right? So shutting down the car wash is absolutely an objective we have, but our primary objectives are the truth, accountability, and public safety. Public safety can be achieved in ways other than shutting down the car wash that killed Sean. I'd like to shut down the car wash that killed Sean, but, but what we really want to do is achieve public safety.
Right, and they're, but they're, but my point to you is that they are willing to talk to you about shutting down the car wash.
So I've talked to Doug.
Right.
I was at his office on Friday morning.
Right.
I've been there before. I've sat in his office with Doug. We've had conversations. Our lawyers are having conversations. He was deposed last week, so I'm happy to talk to him.
Right.
I've talked to him very clearly about our three objectives.
Right.
About what that means, broken it down. I'm happy to, to talk to anybody about our three objectives, the truth, accountability, and public safety.
Right.
And so he knows what those are.
Right.
But, but as you know, and as you've said, civil litigation can take years.
Yeah, but you can settle it tomorrow.
We're fighting over vent...
You can settle it tomorrow.
Well, we can if we have a willing counterparty who's willing to...
But he's willing to shut down the car wash.
He's willing to do one thing of a multi...
Right, but I thought that was your primary goal.
No, no. I have three primary goals.
Okay, well...
The truth, accountability, and public safety.
Right, well, truth and accountability, you know, that, to the extent you're coming to the board and you're asking us to, to shut down the car wash, which you've done.
Yes.
My point to you is, he called me and said, "We're willing to talk about that. If Mr. Richards is willing to agree, we're willing to shut down the car wash." So my point to you, my only point to you, is it's within your control to shut down the car wash if you want. And he said to me, if that's gonna be...
We can let the Fullers shut down the car wash. We can let them get away without the truth. There would be no accountability, and yes, we would achieve public safety.
Right, but the other thing he said is that...
Yeah, absolutely.
That, you know, the cost of the bollards, if he's gonna have that negotiation...
Mr. Colley?
Well, wait, let me finish, please. Let me just finish. He said that if, 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 before he pays the $100,000 to put in the bollards, if you're interested in talking to him about that...
But I've been talking to him.
Settling, settling this and cutting down the car wash, then he doesn't have to put in the bollards, which would be a expense to him.
We've been talking to him. It's been 11 months since Sean was killed.
Right.
On that sidewalk, right? We're, I want to talk about a couple of other things. Public safety is what we're here to talk about tonight.
And that's, that's why I brought up this, this offer from him.
Okay, but that's one of, of three components.
I want to make a correction. We didn't ask you to shut down the car wash. We asked you to revoke the special use permit. They would be allowed to then apply for another special use permit to operate that car wash. We never said shut down the car wash. We said, "We would like you to revoke the special use permit."
Right.
They could apply for another one, and they could continue their business as long as they went through all of the objectives and the things that you have to do to obtain a special use permit. I just want the record to show that. We never came here and asked you to shut down the business. There is a difference.
Yeah, I, I, I read the transcript, and I remember there were several people, and I thought it was you, Ms. Richards, and I apologize if I didn't, if I heard you incorrectly, but I thought you said it should be repurposed for another use. And, and the, and the Fullers are willing to consider repurposing it for another use.
Right, but they're delaying, right?
No, they're willing to, that's why you talked to me today.
You just said they're willing to consider.
Right, but, but you have to sit down with them and talk to them.
I have sat down with them. I have sat down.
And then going back to the issue about the spe, the special use permit, I don't have the power to revoke the special use permit.
I understand that's your position. I understand that's your position.
So, so my only point is that to the extent people keep coming here and say, "We want something done with Fullers," and one of the objectives is to shut them down, and the Fullers call me and say, "Why are we talking about putting up bollards if the goal is to shut us down?" And I'm willing to talk about closing the car wash. So that's why I'm saying it's really something that you have in your power to do. So we can leave it at that, but I just want to make that point.
Yeah, understood. So it's in this board's power to, in obligation to ensure public safety?
Exactly.
Right, right, right. And so...
Exactly. But we have an easy way to do it, right? They're, they're willing to talk to you about shutting down the car wash.
But in the meantime, they're operating a business. And there's, there, a child was killed, Tom.
Right.
And there were three prior incidents, not the ones, if you just let me, why don't we continue this conversation after?
This is an interesting thought, and then we'll...
Sure, go.
When you talk about, I'm, timing, they're willing to do this now because they've got a position now where they...
Why don't they shut us down first, and then we can talk?
Well, they want to do it as part of settling the lawsuit, right?
So they want me to give the lawsuit, and then they'll shut it down?
Right, right. They'll do...
Why don't they shut it down first, and then we'll talk?
They're willing to negotiate. So the point is, the point that they've made you, and I think you agreed that this was a legitimate concern, is if, if the goal is to shut down the car wash, why have them spend the money installing the bollards? And my point is, they're willing to talk to you now, today, about repurposing the car wash for another use, in which case that would obviate the need for the bollards. So to the extent that you want it, then they install the bollards, and then at some point later want to shut down the car wash, their concern is, why don't we talk about shutting down the car wash now, so we don't have to install the bollards?
So, so if we could get sure...
And I think that's a legitimate concern.
And accountability, sure. It's at any cost of a business. They have to look at the long-term cost of this, whether capital expenditure will be recoked before the business is shut down, right?
Right.
But civil litigation can take three or four years, right?
Not a settlement.
We're not going to settle it in the next day, week, month. We're not going to settle it probably this summer unless...
He's anxious to talk to you about it.
I've talked to him. I've told him exactly what it would take. The truth, accountability, and, and that includes the Fuller, Doug Fuller writing a check, right, for killing my son, right? That includes him having tangible reminder every day of the pain that he's caused in the loss, not to me, not to Christine, not to our friends, but to Sean. He took the life of a 14-year-old boy, right? I'm not the victim. Christine's not the victim. Sean is the victim. And they, they need, they, it just can't be life goes on. Oh, sorry, we got 80 people to, to keep, and our life goes on, insurance writes a check, we're going to have a hot dog stand or a Starbucks or whatever, and, and we're still, our life is just fine. I, I want to know the truth about what happened that day and other days. I want him to be held accountable for his actions, and not just Doug, the, the Fullers, the business, the enterprise, and I want public safety as well, absolutely, right? So those are our objectives. If Doug will, or whoever has the authority will give me those three things, I'd settle it tonight. Absolutely. But you mentioned something a few minutes ago, which was different than what you said at the May 7th board meeting. At the May 7th board meeting, you mentioned at least six times that the bollards that had been purchased were crash-tested. And you said, "What our engineers said is that you can have someone do a lot of math, but it is best to have some, something that is actually crash-tested."
Right.
So that's what we're going to have. Six times you used the words "crash-tested."
Right.
Based on the information that we have, as, as we communicated, right, in the certificate that was provided by the vendor, right, these bollards are crash-rated, not crash-tested. The difference is, this is based on math and assumptions, right, not an actual crash-test.
That's not right. Because if you go, if you do, I've, I've done some research on this. They actually say you shouldn't get crash-tested bollards, because you can never tell whether they failed the test or not. All they've been is tested. So when you actually have them crash-rated, there's a, there's a, there's a government agency or a federal, not a federal agency, international agency that rates that.
There's a federal agency that, that our, our expert, Michael Cracken, wrote those regulations.
It's actually better to be rated than tested. And what they do is, they extrapolate from actual tests to different bollards they make for different sizes. So there has been crash-tested, but they use that test and they use the math to get to an, to appropriate, you know, different weights and different speeds. So they don't crash-test each bollard. They do crash-testing, but individual crash, bollards are cra, are crash-rated.
Understand the individual, that type of bollard with those materials has not been crash-tested.
Right, it's been crash-rated. Other bollards have been tested.
Which is different than what you said May 7th, right?
And I am not an engineer. I, I scan correct.
You said it's important to use "crash-tested."
Yeah, it's crash-rated. And that's what we're doing. We're getting crash-rated bollards.
Which is a lower standard than crash-tested.
No, it's not. It's a better standard.
Okay. The next meeting, we'll have an expert come who can testify as to crash-rating versus crash-testing.
We decide engineering issues at the village by using village engineers that we hire. We are installing the bollards that we have decided are appropriate.
Okay. When are, let me get back to my question. When are we installing those bollards?
Well, as I said, Mr. Fuller called me about concerns about shutting down the business.
He's delaying.
No, he's not delaying, because I'm still working to get the engineer. So once we get the engineer, then we'll turn it over to him.
So we don't have an engineer?
He's going to come back to me at that point. He's going to say again, "What is the issue about shutting down the business? Are we still discussing that?" So he doesn't want to incur the cost. So hopefully you guys can talk settlement before he does that.
We've talked settlement. We're a long way from being settled.
So we are, we are working with the engineer now.
I think, I think we should assume we're not going to settle in the near term.
Right, but we're still working with the engineer. Once we get the engineer approval, we'll then have the bollards installed. We have two engineers. One is rating, this, certifying the bollards. So it's crash-rated and certified by an engineer, and an engineer will oversee the installation. So we have two engineers. We're doing this very carefully to make sure we do it right. But now that the, we have the, the Jersey barriers there, we don't think there's any problem. We can take our time and do it right.
So do we have a timeline from the engineers?
Well, we have to, I, I don't have one here, but we will get it done.
At the last meeting, you said there was a timeline, so that's why I'm asking.
I don't remember saying that, but I don't have a timeline in mind.
Okay. Also, at the last meeting, you mentioned that you assumed that the independent engineer, Melissa Lang, who presented written report to the board in advance of that meeting and spoke at that meeting, was someone that we had hired. She, the independent engineer was not somebody we had hired. She undertook the work entirely on her own. We have not engaged her. She's done this uncompensated as a concerned citizen, as someone whose sons go to Fontana's and enjoy sandwiches there. So I just wanted to make clear that you, you assumed we, we hired her. We did, we did not hire her.
I assume somebody was paying, but...
Nope, nope.
Okay?
On her own, on her own. So the, the main reason I wanted to come here and talk was about the, the prior incidents. At the last meeting, you referenced four incidents.
Correct.
You were going off police reports.
Right.
So totally understand. And you correctly, I think, for the large part, described those four incidents. Those were not the incidents that we've been talking about. At least some of them weren't. Okay? So let me talk about the incidents that we've been talking about.
Where did you get, I mean, I thought, police reports are all we have.
Yeah, that, that's apparent, that may be all we have, right? But there's, so let me tell you, okay? So the first incident was October 2007. There's a woman named Diana Newland. I spoke with Diana yesterday. Her family lives here. Her brother and father-in-law, the Newlands, both live here in Hinsdale. Diana lives, I believe, in Western Springs. This was October, she thinks, 22nd of 2007. She might be off by a couple of days. There's no police report for this, which is a different issue. A Jeep Grand Cherokee owned by Diana Newland was exiting the car wash. As it was exiting, a Fuller's employee, who did not have a driver's license and was on his first day on the job, and this was confirmed by two of the Fullers, Doug being one of them, entered the vehicle, floored the accelerator, causing the car to fly out of the car wash bay, crossed the sidewalk, jumped the curb, crossed Lincoln Street, and crashed into an oversized pickup truck parked in front of Fontana's Subs. Totaled both the Jeep Chank, Jeep Grand Cherokee and the pickup truck. This is, that's the first of three times those same facts have, have happened. No tire tracks indicating any attempt to stop the vehicle. Within a few days, the Fullers paid Mrs. Newland more than fair value for the Jeep in cash. When she told the Fuller's manager on the scene that they were lucky that nobody was walking by, he said, "We know that it could have been a tragedy. We were lucky. We will improve our practices." That was either Owen or Doug. They were both there, and she spoke with both of them.
And you tell me the date again of this?
Yeah, October 2007. And Diana would be happy to talk to the board. She'd be happy, she has some documentation associated with this. She said there were several police cars on the scene, blocked off the area, but there's apparently no police report. And there was no citation or fine assessed against Fullers for this threat to public safety and the damage to private property. Again, both vehicles were totaled. It raises, as you, as you mentioned, different questions about the operations of the village and the Hinsdale Police Department, in particular, the relationship with the Fullers, that no ticket or a report was even filed there. The January 2009 incident, this is one that you did address.
Right.
Okay, it's another incident of a Fuller's employee in a Jeep exiting the car wash bay. The Fuller's employee stated that the Jeep accelerated without warning. That was the, the, the testimony or the statement of the employee. And the attendant claims to have attempted to apply the brake, but the Jeep would not respond, which is exactly what happened when Sean was killed and exactly what the employee said when Sean was killed, but the black box showed otherwise. It showed the brake was never touched, the accelerator was pressed to the ground. So here, the driver said he hit the brake. Somehow, the car flew across. I know that, so in the 2009 incident, the Jeep traveled across the sidewalk across Lincoln Avenue, struck an unoccupied car parked across the street in front of the dry cleaners, then the Jeep came to stop when it struck a tree in the parkway. The force from the Jeep sent the unoccupied car into the dry cleaner's front window. Following the incident, the Fullers became aware that there was a nationwide problem, as you mentioned, with certain Jeeps.
Right.
Having acceleration issues. Fullers concluded, based on the driver's statement, that the Jeep suffered from such an inadvertent acceleration issue. Fullers and the driver, each of which had a vested stake in blaming the Jeep, concluded that the incident was not their fault, but was caused by the acceleration problems in Jeeps. Neither the village nor the police department investigated the incident. They simply accepted Fuller's explanation. To their credit, to mitigate safety concerns, the operating procedures at Fuller's car wash were changed as a result of this incident. Jeep vehicles were manually pushed out of Fuller's car wash bay for approximately 10 years after the 2009 accident, until the Jeep software problems were resolved. So the, the one, you know, statement there is that the determination that this was a Jeep issue was made by Fuller's and the driver, who both had vested interests. There was no other investigation to determine that. The third incident, the July 2022 incident that you mentioned last week, Lori Aldrich, whose car was here, or was there, is here to, to give details better than I can. So...
Good evening. My name is Lori Aldrich. I live in Western Springs. I am the owner of the Lexus that was, what do you want to call it, broadsided by two unmanned vehicles driving out of Fuller's car wash on May 17, 2022. After reading the article in the May 23rd issue of the Hinsdaleian, I was greatly disturbed by its description of the aforementioned crash, and even more so by the relevance of the data that it shared. Let me begin by correcting the inaccuracies. Mr. Col, McCullough, or Mr. Colley, in your PowerPoint last meeting, you said that it was rainy, but that day, it was like today, clear, you know, sun, not a drop of rain. In the article, they said that, or I think you said this too, that the car wash was closed, but it was not. There were customers inside, sitting there. There were customers outside, standing around, waiting for their cars. In fact, the two cars that hit mine were customers. They were there to have their car washed. You also said that the engines were off, and I'm not a mechanic, but the Honda at least was in drive. This can be corroborated by an email from Fuller's insurance agent who investigated this crash. She states, "I clarified the facts of loss. The 2016 Jeep Patriot was in the car wash tunnel in front of the Honda CRV. The Jeep was in neutral, as it was supposed to be, but the Honda was in the drive gear. So when the Jeep came out of the tunnel, it was at a safe distance from the end, and an employee was heading towards it to get into it and move it to another station. However, because the Honda was in the drive gear, it came out of the tunnel and rolled forward quickly, rolled into the rear of the Jeep, and pushed the Jeep forward, causing it to hit the parked and unoccupied Lexus."
So again, what was the date of this? Because I have the police reports here. I was just going to...
The date of the accident?
Yeah.
May 17 of 2022. So I think this clearly contradicts the version in the article and confirms that the crash was caused by the negligence of a Fuller's employee. These facts can be confirmed by several other witnesses and other sources. Uh, Mr. Colly, I keep saying McCully, I apologize. Mr. Colly, you described the damage as minor or minimal in each of the accidents prior to the one that killed Sean. In my case, I don't know, I had around ten thousand dollars worth of damage. I did not have the use of my car for three months, and it had to be sent to a specialist because of the force of impact. Um, but I do agree with you that these damages are minimal, especially when viewed in light of what could have happened. Had my car not been parked there, those two cars could have run over yet another sidewalk and crashed into Fontana's, severely injuring or killing someone. And by the way, if I had left Fontana's about eight seconds earlier, I would have been standing exactly at the point of impact, and I would have been crushed pretty much from my ribs to my knees. So whether the damage was major or minor, the fact remains that both Fullers and the village could certainly imagine how devastating the outcome could have been in each of the accidents before the one that killed Sean. So after three clear warnings, what was done to ensure vehicles would not drive over sidewalks and streets in a pedestrian-trafficked area? Nothing, apparently. I pleaded with the manager of Fullers and their insurance agent to recognize how severe the consequences could have been, namely death or severe injury. And at the time, I didn't know of the other, at least two vehicle, times that vehicles had crossed sidewalks and streets coming out of the car wash. Which leads to my confusion over the relevance of some of the data presented by the village. For example, stating that the car wash has been operating since nineteen sixty-two, why does this matter? Any business, whether operating for a hundred years or a day, needs to address an accident that exposes a risk and do something to make sure it never happens again. Mr. Colly, you shared a graph showing the number of accidents at other busy locations in town. Again, of what value is this? The number of accidents anywhere else on the planet is completely irrelevant to the fact that vehicles driving across sidewalks and streets in oh-seven, oh-nine, and then again in twenty-two should have alerted both Fullers and the village of the glaringly obvious risk, but it was ignored. No ticket or citation was even issued. Doing nothing was grossly negligent and extremely reckless, and no amount of data will excuse that. Christine and Brian have requested three things: truth, accountability, and safety. I'm here to clarify the truth of what happened in two thousand twenty-two and to show that the killing of Sean was entirely preventable. At least give them future safety.
So just, I have a police report here. So was your car a Lexus, a two thousand seven Lexus?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, did you, and you spoke to the police officers at the time?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do you remember the officer you spoke to?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name's Christine Richards, and actually, currently, we live at two forty-one East First Street. But we also have a home at three oh-six South Vine Street, and we also own property on Clay Street. So my main point was, and it was something that Brian had said when we came here before, we're not here to be adversaries. We all, I assume, want the same thing. And that's a safe village with sidewalks that are safe for pedestrians to use for walking and biking, riding scooters and the like, pushing strollers. However, the village's board's actions, in my opinion, continue to be slow and inadequate following a tragic, violent, and wholly preventable death of our fourteen-year-old son. Again, I'm going to repeat, we want three things: truth, accountability, and public safety. So we might overlap a little bit, but I just want, in regards to the truth, I did read the minutes of the January meeting where you approved of the bollards and a brick wall, and I haven't seen either of those. And again, that was at the January meeting. The minutes indicate that Sean was killed on Fuller's property. And that's not correct. And I would like whoever is in charge of the minutes to make sure that it's corrected, that he was killed on village property. He never stepped on Fuller's property. The other fact that I don't think residents know or understand is that the Fuller's employee who drove the Jeep that killed Sean had his license for only three days, and it was his first day on the job. Also, car washes are deemed services and do not generate any tax revenue for the village. The most recent information that's publicly available indicates in two thousand twenty-two that that location paid under twenty-one thousand dollars in property taxes. So despite what I hear from a lot of other residents, I do not believe that the slow response to this safety hazard has anything to do with a potential lost revenue to the village. Continuing with the truth, I am also going to mention that the chart comparing fender benders in a parking lot at Grant Square or the mobile gas station to multiple incidents where vehicles crossed a sidewalk and a street before crashing is very, very different. Our son was walking on a village sidewalk, not in a parking lot. And the vehicle that hit him was not driven by the owner of the vehicle. These vehicles are driven by other people who do not own them, and cars are getting more complicated, as I'm sure you all know. I do not believe anyone can quite comprehend how horrific that incident was without having seen what occurred. This is the reason that I've requested multiple times that you, Mr. Colly, the leader of the village, watch the videos that show exactly what happened that day. I asked you to do that as a personal request to me back in January, when you met us at our home. I would like to now thank all of the people, board members, and the village manager for having the courage to watch the video, to witness the tragedy, to see what our good police officers and fire department employees had to face on that horrific day. Mr. Colly, I know it's not an easy thing to do, but I do think that knowledge is power. And you need to see with your own eyes the speed, the power, and the destruction that occurred on July seventeenth. I have heard you mention pre, many times, that it's been there since nineteen sixties, and you're not going to change that. But I'd like to challenge that view. In nineteen sixty, I imagine the grade schools and high schools did not have shooting, shooter drills, security systems that exist, and special protocols for visitors. There's never been a school shooting incident in Hinsdale, yet every school has revised its visitor policy and security and student training to address this potential threat. I'm also confident that in the nineteen sixties and even the nineteen eighties, that sports stadiums allowed bags to enter. Now, some allow no bags, others allow clear bags. Again, the vast majority of these venues, these are protective measures before a tragedy occurs. The world has changed since nineteen sixty-two and continues to change every day. I'm going to hand out an recent article by NPR regarding the fact that the U.S. has hit a forty-one-year-high in pedestrian deaths. The vast majority of these deaths are pedestrians walking on roads and not on a sidewalk. What used to be injuries now results in the death of Americans because of the larger, higher, and heavier vehicles, and these are the vehicles that are going through the car wash every day. Now on to safety. There are actually two safety issues at the Fuller's car wash location. One is with the exit, and this may be addressed with the installation of new bollards if they ever get put in. The other is the sidewalk along Lincoln and Chicago. The Fuller's employees are no longer parking cars on the sidewalk, but they still use it every day to turn their vehicles, and sometimes they even go onto the sidewalk in reverse as they're trying to maneuver, which is even more dangerous even with backup cameras. I applaud the village for its recent action on the e-bikes. This is a wonderful step towards safety. I applaud the village for its rules requiring restaurants to only be able to use a certain portion of the sidewalk for outdoor dining while allowing enough space for pedestrians to still utilize the sidewalk. I'm told by restaurant workers that the village comes out and they will measure with measuring tape to ensure that those tables remain in the space permitted. I'm also told that those restaurants have to pay the village a fee to be allowed to put the tables on the sidewalk. Yet, since at least nineteen ninety-seven, when a cease and desist letter was issued to the Fullers by the village of Hinsdale for parking on the sidewalk, which it says they're not allowed to do, even though that was issued, they have still utilized the public sidewalk for its own business needs and profit, and the village has never issued a fine or collected a fee. My question to you is, why has this been allowed for so long? Why the discrepancy? Shouldn't all businesses and sidewalks be treated equally? I want to conclude with this. Mr. Colly, you say the board does not have the power to do anything to protect the public from this unsafe business operation. I do not believe this. In the past year, the board found a way to pass a new ordinance that does not allow buses to drop off migrants without a five-day warning. The board also passed an ordinance that attempts to avoid rentals being listed on Airbnb. When this board wants to accomplish something, it finds a way.
Anyone else? So I don't know that I said that we're not have the power to do anything protecting public safety. What I did say is that we don't have the zoning power to revoke a special use permit, unless there's a violation of one of the conditions of the special use permit. As it relates to the going on the sidewalks, I've spoken to Chief King about this several times. I know we have police officers go by the property routinely to make sure that they're not on the sidewalks, and we will ticket them if the Fullers are, you know, go on the sidewalks. I also know from the Fullers that they have hired two new managers. Their sole responsibility is to direct traffic. So they're making an effort to make sure that they stay off the sidewalks. So we are, we're doing everything we can to make sure that they stay off the sidewalks, and the bollards will be, you know, put in, you know, in place as soon as we get the engineering report that we need.
Sorry, I shouldn't have sat down so quickly.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so I, on occasion, go and sit across from Fuller's car wash.
Right.
And I've never seen a police officer there. Um, I'm sure maybe they're there when I'm not there.
Right.
But in all of the times that I've been there, and I've taken video, every single time, they've been on the sidewalk.
We will, we will ticket them if we catch them on the sidewalk.
Okay, it's a game of cat and mouse. I have a suggestion. How about that brick wall that you talked about and already passed? How about a brick wall from the corner of Chicago and Lincoln all the way to the end of their property? That will make sure that they don't go on the sidewalk, and it will give pedestrians peace of mind that no car is going to be reversing there or anything. And if they don't want to do a brick wall, you told us at our home in January that you offered to put those Jersey barriers to protect pedestrians. Put a Jersey barrier there.
Where, on the sidewalk?
Well, you could put it on the sidewalk if they won't let you put it on their property.
Well, I can look into that. We haven't talked, I haven't talked to them about that.
But wouldn't that give everyone peace of mind?
Right. We have to, there has to be a space, obviously, for the cars to enter and exit the parking lot or the car wash.
Cars enter on Chicago, and they exit on Chicago. There's a curb cut on Lincoln, but there shouldn't be.
Right.
So get rid of the curb cut, put some protective measures. The cones don't work, because when I'm there, they move them, and then they move them back. So there are a lot of creative solutions. The gentleman who was here a couple of meetings ago said, "You guys are creative. Look what you did during the COVID. You knew to put Jersey barriers on that street to protect the diners. I just don't understand. I'd love for someone to come someday, any day, just sit with me and explain why the discrepancy. Why are you negotiating their civil lawsuit with my husband at a board meeting?"
I'm not negotiating. I'm just saying that, as I said, the Fullers called me and said if the goal here is to get rid of their business, they don't want to spend the money on the, on the, on the pile or the bollards.
And as you have made clear, they own that property, and they own that business. We don't.
Right, but they're willing, they're willing to shut it down to settle with you.
They've never said that, first of all.
I'm telling you that. They called me and they said they sent your husband an email.
No, it sounded like on a condition.
Well, I...
There is a condition attached to that.
Right, that you settled the lawsuit with them.
Okay, well, we have had that negotiation. But what I'm saying is, what you're in charge of is not trying to figure that out. You're in charge of public safety.
That's right.
Public safety.
And that's why I brought it up. And I brought it up because there is a way for you to have them stop having a car wash there.
And there's a way for you to protect the pedestrians on Lincoln Street and avoid this from happening again tomorrow. Put those Jersey barriers up. You can put them on the side of the sidewalk. Yes, we'll only be able to use half of the sidewalk, but at least we will be assured that a car is not going to kill another person in this village. And I don't understand why it's taken almost eleven months for this board to act.
Well, one of the reasons is we had, we had a design, we talked to your husband about having a second engineer. So there's been time to get the second engineer. So we're doing it the right way. That's, that's part of the delay.
No, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
You put the Jersey barrier, and we complimented you at that exit. I'm talking about the other unsafe area. Put more Jersey barriers up. Make sure that they use their property. The sidewalk, as I told Doug Friday afternoon, after he was on that, the cars kept going on the sidewalk. I said, "This is not your property. This is the village's property. That's your property. Keep your business on your property, and let me stand on the village property."
Okay.
And you want to know the answer? Just doing the best we can. It's not good enough. Not good enough.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Maria Banks. I live at two two-seven West Third Street. Um, I just have a comment on how I feel you are coming across, Mr. Colly. I mean, I find it offensive that you are putting this in the Richards' hands of, they have, that's what it sounds like.
No, no, no.
You repeatedly comment them, saying they have the power. Let me turn this around and say, you have the power to make the sidewalk safe.
We do not. We have the power to make the sidewalk safe.
Yes.
We have the police.
You have the power to make the sidewalk safe.
I have heard.
And I find it offensive that you have now repeatedly, at this meeting, lay it at their feet.
Well, let me just remind you.
And it does sound like you are negotiating for the Fullers.
No, 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 no.
When your main job is public safety.
Right.
They have other things, three things, that they are trying to accomplish.
I heard that. I heard that.
You heard that, okay?
Yes, but I do recall...
So stop putting it at their feet, that they can make... That they can make this lawsuit go away. They have been talking to the Fuller's. Brian made that clear. The fact that Doug is trying to negotiate with you to have you in a public board meeting, put this issue at their feet is appalling.
Well, I don't, I don't agree. The, the, at the last couple of meetings, people said that that's an inappropriate place for a car wash. That was said multiple times at meetings. And so what Doug Fuller said, okay, if that's the issue, then why are we having to spend money on bollards? And so he said, I will let Mr. Richards know that I am willing to, to repurpose the, the lot, to do something else there. I am making that point. There's a way that we can, we can not have a car wash there, which people said that that is not, we had people stay, stand up and say you need a larger space for a car wash. It's not appropriate for a car wash.
And then the Richards just laid out to you multiple times the three things they are looking for.
Okay.
And that they have laid out their plan with Doug Fuller. They laid out what they need to settle and you keep bringing back up that they have the power to settle this lawsuit and make it go away.
They do.
So does Doug Fuller. Have him agree, tell Doug to agree to the negotiations that the Richards are asking for. Doug Fuller also has the power.
He's willing to shut down the car wash.
Accountability. Public safety is a factor, right? I thought you understood they're searching for three things. The truth, accountability, and public safety.
Well, I don't know what truth and accountability, those are kind of hard for me to.
Well, the truth, we just heard more of the truth of what happened, right? Which seemingly hadn't come out before and I find that eye-opening.
Solution to repurpose the, the lot to something other than the car wash? Isn't that?
I think the solution is until the Richards and the Fuller's settle the lawsuit that is outside the purview of this board, that this board makes the sidewalk safe. There are two different issues. And if Doug wants to settle with them, let Doug settle with them. Being an intermediary in a public forum is, again, appalling.
Understood.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was just reminded that we, all of us as residents, paid for those bollards. You made that very clear at the meeting. So now we have what you said were expensive bollards sitting somewhere on village property.
They're going to be installed. I mean, we are going to be, and they're going to get, and they're going to reimburse us for it.
You just told us that they didn't want to do that because of long-term.
Well, we will work that out, right? We, 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 I wanted to get, I wanted to order them and get them quickly, so we, we fronted the money for them.
As fast as humanly possible.
Right, and now we have an issue with an engineer. We're working that out and then we won't stall them. But as I said, the, the question that Doug Fuller raised with me, which I think we all agree is a legitimate question. If he's going to shut down the business, why put in the bollards? That was my only point.
So tomorrow I will see those Jersey barriers on the sidewalk protecting the pedestrians?
We, we, no. We, we hear what you're saying. Because I, because I, we will think about it, but you.
No, there's nothing to think about.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying. We appreciate your comments.
Mr. Colley, have you seen the video?
I have not and I.
How can you even make this statement? You have no idea what happened that day.
We appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Okay, go on to the next item. I got it, I got it. It's to you, Matt?
Okay. So this is item seven A and seven B, first reads that we'll take together. And this is relating to Hinsdale Prime Steak, which is a new restaurant. It's going to be opening up at the site of the former Corner Bakery at the corner of Hinsdale Ave and Garfield. And so Hinsdale Prime Steak has applied for a B-two liquor license, which would allow them to serve wine, beer, and cocktails. But they would also like to have a B-three license, which allows guests to bring their own bottles of wine. And a B-three license is currently only available for restaurants that don't have another liquor license. So what's being proposed is that we would amend the liquor code so that a, a B-three, you know, bring your own liquor license could be either a standalone license or it could be a supplemental license. Standalone license would be a thousand dollars a year, supplemental license would be five hundred dollars a year. So then, once we would formally pass the ordinance allowing a supplemental B-three license, which is what Hinsdale Prime Steak would like, then we would also vote to increase the number of B-two and B-three licenses. And then Liquor Commissioner, the village president, would then award those licenses to, to Hinsdale Prime Steak. And are, are people from the restaurant here? Would, would you guys like to say anything or?
Good afternoon. My name is Antonio. I'm owner of the restaurant, you know, facility, Hinsdale Prime Steak.
My name is Alberto Cortez. I go by Cisco. I'll be overseeing the everyday operation, basically, general manager.
So we're talking about the fusion of a B-two and a B-three license, if possible. We have been working in restaurants where we sell alcohol and they also allow people to bring their own bottles of wine to make a better experience. You know, people have sometimes their nice bottles of wine at home and they want to have a better experience bringing them to a restaurant. If you allow it. If not, we are okay with just selling our own alcohol. Actually, the B, Y O B is more for like having a better experience for the, for the guests. Because business-wise, money-wise, it's not even too profitable for us.
Right, you'll charge a corking fee, but it's, I think it's meant for like sort of real high-end bottles of wine from somebody's personal seller.
Yeah, and I, I talked to the police chief about it. He doesn't see any, you know, issue with, with that.
And you're limited to one bottle for every two people?
Yeah. So it's got a fee and if you buy a bottle of wine from a restaurant, so we're not going to charge any fee, of course.
This is the old Corner Bakery?
Yes, right.
So when are you planning to open?
Well, we're, we're planning to open like.
Is this the only thing that's holding you up is a liquor license?
End of July.
Once again?
Is that the, is this what's holding you up is the liquor license?
No, one of the things. One of the things, but like, no, not actually. Uh, it has been a construction permits.
Okay, okay.
And we were waiting for Hill Department. We, we didn't know, we have to also send the blueprints to the Hill Department in order to come along with the village permits. So that was the way.
Okay.
So if everything goes well, if you allow us to have the licenses, so we would like to be open in July.
Okay.
I, I do have one question. First of all, I really appreciate the fact that you guys are opening. And it just, it's more of a curiosity. Parking there is a bit of a challenge, just where it's general locations. Are you, because you have kind of some type of valet?
We will have a valet parking, so we already have a person. I forget the name of his company, but he's been.
That's not even, I was just curious if that was going to be the case.
Where are they going to park the cars when they're dropped up by the valet, one of the church parking lots?
So he, well, this company told us that they can come in as a village, like make like a plan, like where's the best option for them.
Okay, okay.
So that.
You've mentioned the commuter lot, you may use those, yeah.
You know, they have, the companies, they have their own people, so they're the ones who are going to, where do you tell them where they can park? They're going to figure that out like.
The, the point on that is we do have, on-street parking is allowed, but we would, at least I would prefer as if during restaurant hours, if you use a commuter parking lot, which is very close. So if you would just ask your, if you just ask that company to coordinate.
Trusty Stifler, as you, as you know, the village has hired the parking consultant. His report, I believe, is going to be done by the end of August. But one of the issues we put on his agenda or task list was just conceptualizing these new restaurants coming in with valets. So I, I think that's going to be part of that parking report with suggestions specifically to the village.
May I, just for the record, and this is a little bit unrelated, but I actually just had an elderly, longtime Hinsdale resident who's health impaired call me yesterday and wanted to inquire about the status of valet parking downtown. She says she can't use any of the restaurants if she's by herself, you know, unless she's with her, her family who can park the car with her, she's in a wheelchair. So just for the record, if we could maybe get a status on that, too. I think we used to have several valet parking options.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. No, I think it's, it's a go.
Yeah, it's, it has to be a second read, but I don't think that.
There's no reason, we have a policy, some things have to come back to the board twice, but there's no reason for you to show up for that. Okay, so I don't, I don't see any problems with this.
Sounds good. So means the B-two and B-three years going to be okay, too?
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll be the second, second week of July.
Does that create any problems for you?
No.
Okay.
No, we.
We're just anxious.
Okay, okay.
We look forward to it. Thanks for choosing Hinsdale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that both A and B, Matt?
Yes, that's both A and B. Right, so, so A, A is amending the B-three license to have, to be a supplemental or standalone and then, and then seven B is, is the actual licenses that will go to Hinsdale. Let's see, and then we have another, another liquor license. This is item seven C. This is for an A-one license for Hinsdale Pantry, doing business as Hinsdale Food and Liquor on South Madison, south of Fifty-Fifth Street. And. Yeah, oh yeah, when, hear from the applicant, why don't you come up? I'm a Vishwa Khathari, is that? Is that you? Okay, great. So you're, you're, you're buying the business from, it's your husband?
Yes.
Okay. And then, my understanding is you're planning to operate the business basically in the same manner that's been operated, you know, today?
Yes.
Yes. And so the license is for a Class A-one license, so it's a package sale of wine and beer. And the designated liquor managers are going to be yourself and are you the other manager? Yeah, okay. LIV Patel. And as, as I mentioned with the other license, the way that it works is when a business is sold, the number of licenses in the village goes down and so then we have to formally increase the number of licenses again. And in order, and so that we can award you a new license. I understand that you've installed some new, it's a new point of sale system to kind of, you know, monitor and enforce alcohol sales. Is that, is that right? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, we apply new system. Like going forward, last time, we, there is a two fence over there. So we apply new system to control a wrong ID or something. They are, they are do the, the system is, can.
It can like scan the ID and know like if the IDs are.
And also there is any other out-of-state ID. We are putting a notice over there. So we, we are now checking if anything out-of-state ID. We are checking two IDs or three IDs to match name and everything.
Okay. So, okay. Great. Chief King, any, any concerns that you have or?
No, I've met with the business previously, when there are some issues down there. Protocol's good. We continue to do business checks at any place they sell alcohol, just to ensure that there's no alcohol sales to minors.
Okay. Any questions from, okay? So again, this is a second read. I, I don't think there's any need for you to come back for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So when it can be a transfer to my account?
So two weeks we'll have a meeting and after that we'll prove it and have a motion. It could be right after that. Four, I'm sorry, four weeks. In the summer, we only have a meeting every, every month, so.
Okay, so after that I have to apply for state license, so that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, and then item seven D. This is a first read for an ordinance to authorize transfer of appropriations within different village funds. We do this every year. In, in March of twenty twenty-three, we adopted the appropriations ordinance for twenty twenty-three based on the twenty twenty-three budget. And state law requires us to amend the ordinance to transfer monies between different line items within funds where individual line items have exceeded the amounts being appropriated for those funds. And so now that the audit is substantially complete, this ordinance then is going to reallocate the monies from areas of surplus to items where there was a deficiency. Primarily, it's, it's within the departments of the budget. And the, the largest increase in, in the different line items, if you look at that, were related to capital transfers, the capital improvement plan, the master infrastructure plan, the library. And then there was one fund that was actually exceeded in total, and I'll deal with that in the next item. But there's no impact to the village budget. It's just a legal matter, kind of municipal housekeeping. Carrie, do you have anything else to add?
No, that's correct. Item D is just transfers within departments and line items individually. Each fund in and of itself is, has not exceeded appropriation with the exception of an item E, the Foreign Fire Insurance Tax Fund. So those are taken separately.
Any other questions? I think this has to be a second read.
Actually, our village attorney said it's allowable to move it to consent if the board wishes to do so.
Great, let's make it consent. And then seven E, as I mentioned, this is a supplemental appropriations ordinance to deal with the one fund where the total amount appropriated was exceeded. This is the Foreign Fire Insurance Tax Fund, which is a very small fund. Only had total appropriations of ninety-nine thousand dollars. And the fund was exceeded by sixteen thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars. Those extra expenses have been paid out of the fund reserve balances, but were legally required to increase the appropriation to cover that excess. There's no impact on the village budget.
That's it.
Okay. Can we do that consent also? Okay, great.
Neil? Okay, let's move to item seven F. Different kind of a item. It's to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Hinsdale and the village of Burr Ridge regarding the coordination, planning, and construction of the Woodview Water Main Extension Project and the Elm Street Water Main Interconnection Project. So there are two projects here, with the first one granting to Burr Ridge a utility easement through the, through Catherine Legg Memorial Park to extend a Burr Ridge water main two hundred and fifty feet to the Woodview Estates subdivision. The purpose of this is to provide this subdivision with additional fire flow pressure and redundant water supply. In exchange for the, in exchange for the easement, Burr Ridge will add a fire hydrant in KLM and replace and upgrade the existing chain leak fence in the southeast corner of KLM and also allow the village of Hinsdale to interconnect Hinsdale's water supply with that of Burr Ridge at Elm Street and Fifty-Ninth Street. By so doing, we in Hinsdale will have an alternate water supply should the DuPage supply become unavailable for whatever reason. Presently, we have backup wells, but these can only provide water for three or four days. So basically, if something happens to the DuPage supply, we would be, we would be in trouble in a few days. What is the likelihood of this? Does the DuPage water supply ever go down? Yes, it did in two thousand and seven for one day and in twenty-ten for three days. Both times we switched to backup wells and things were okay. As for costs, Burr Ridge has agreed to fund one-third of Hinsdale's costs for design, engineering, and construction costs of the interconnection in exchange for receiving the easement through KLM. The total cost of the Elm Street connection is estimated to be four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars and will be budgeted in twenty twenty-five. And again, Burr Ridge will play, will pay one-third of this cost. Now, some additional thoughts you may ask yourself. Uh, now, some additional thoughts, you may ask yourself, well, where does Burr Ridge's water come from? Don't they come, don't Hinsdale and Burr Ridge get it from Lake Michigan? Well, yes, but Hinsdale's comes from the Jardine Water Purification Plant, just east of downtown Chicago. And Burr Ridge's comes from Eugene So- uh Sawyer Purification Plant on the far south side and through a pumping station in Bedford Park. You didn't know that, did you? Do other towns have interconnects like what we're proposing? Yes, they do. How good is the cost estimate of four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars for the cost of the interconnect project? We have not yet received a firm estimate. Uh, C M T, who's doing the design engineering, has estimated two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars, but George and his team feel that price is too low. Uh, we also have the village manager from Burr Ridge, and if if I'm sure I've left out, if I've left out anything pertinent, please uh straighten me out.
Uh, I'm Walter, Village Administrator, Village of Ridge, just wanna thank everyone for their time tonight, and wanna thank George and Kathleen for their excellent service in helping negotiate this agreement. Uh, Village of Burr Ridge approved it five-zero last night at our board meeting, so our end is approved. Um, our village is very excited to partner with the Village of Hinsdale on yet another project, and we look forward to both communities benefiting from this agreement. We really feel like this is a true win-win in negotiation, so I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Very important. For the construction uh close to K L M, are you gonna lose any trees in there?
It's my understanding, not many, if any, go ahead.
The lineman is avoiding the trees, so it's in between a Nykor gas easement and that row of trees along the fence, so we're gonna.
We took a lot of care to make sure that neither party was too impacted.
They've also offered to plant a couple additional trees as well, if we're gonna.
Is that written down? I didn't, I didn't approve that, neither did my board, you do what you want.
That may have not gotten classified.
Also, I like Holliday's project. Just to come in on the side here. It's been a long weekend.
But yeah, there's no, there's no major impacts on any trees.
We've been looking for an interconnect for a long time, because while we have a backup wells, I think you may have mentioned this, the wells only last like three or four days. So Burr Ridge has, I think, two interconnects with other, other municipalities already, right?
We actually have three, uh, one with Indian Head Park, but that's only the Indian Head Park, and we have two bidirectional otherwise.
Right, so we have none, so this is, this is really something that's advantage to the, to the Village of Hinsdale, we really, this is.
It's winning.
If we were to have a water outage for that more than three or four days, we would really rely upon this, so this is a good, good project.
I think just one note, it came up as a question at our board meeting, what happens if Elm Street doesn't work out? Hinsdale is the lead on that project, so if there is a need to do somewhere else, we're gonna follow your guys' lead on that, so just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions on uh on this? Okay. Uh, consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay. And then um item seven G uh is for design engineering services for the Elm Street Water Main Interconnection Project uh to the two hundred forty-five thousand dollars uh that we just discussed in the last item. The cost of the design services uh is, of course Burr Ridge will be paying, will be paying one-third of that. Um, it's been determined that the optimum location to make the interconnection with Burr Ridge's water system is at Elm and Fifty-Ninth Street. Uh, this is unbudgeted, and the cost for this will be paid using funds from the water capital budget. Uh, the actual construction costs will, the actual construction costs will be included in the calendar year twenty-five M I P budget. Uh, assuming adoption of the I J with Burr Ridge, Hinsdale will be reimbursed here again for thirty, or one-third of, or hundred, fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the engineering services. Good?
Yep.
Good consent agenda?
Yep.
Uh, brings us to agenda item seven H, and this is a major adjustment to allow for uh plan changes, to reduce the number of units from twelve units to nine units uh at Vine Street Station, which is located at one twenty-five South Vine Street. Um, our decision tonight is to review the first read and then decide to keep it here at the Board of Trustees or to refer it to Plan Commission for a full review. Uh, my opinion, this is fairly simple, we should be able to do it here at this board. Also, uh, I would note that this uh plan has been reviewed by Steve Cashman, the Chair of the Plan Commission, and he is uh, he has said that it does not need to come back to the uh plan. Uh, please recall, this board previously approved a planned development for age-restricted lifestyle housing uh to repurpose the old Zion School. Uh, if I recall, to put words in people's mouths, this board was pretty happy with this project. Um, the specific changes here tonight are fairly simple, I'm gonna go through them quickly. Reducing units from twelve to nine, which is good, less density. Uh, reduce the number of parking spaces from twenty-five to twenty-two, so there's more parking spots per unit. Uh, and everything is within code, as only one point five spaces are required by code, and we're gonna have more than two here. Uh, the site planned and building elevations, changes to the windows, if there's any questions, I would assume it would be here, but basically, on the east side, they're changing the balconies, they're going down from two balconies to one balcony, and then on the north elevation, two balconies up to four. Uh, and then a s- very small spot on the interior first floor where there's parking, code requires twenty-four feet, so cars can pass by each other. There is one spot that is very small, that it has a load-bearing wall where it's gonna go down to twenty-one feet. But there, I think there's only one or two spots beyond that, so the likelihood of two cars passing are are close to zero. I think that's it. Applicants here tonight, if there's anything to add?
Uh, just, uh, we're really thrilled to be back. Uh, we've encountered some, in some of the uh things that were encountered during selective demolition were, started as disappointments and ended up being fortuitous. Uh, I I do think this is a better project with smaller units. We've also really talked to the market, the market desires larger units, but this really has nothing to do with that. This, this is a, the major change tonight is parking. And actually, the way we wrote uh the read, the the prior agreement stipulated that any reduction in parking required a return. Uh, and if we had used the word ratio, we probably wouldn't even need to be here. Uh, but we remain, we've closed on the site, we're super, super excited about it, and uh we look, we're uh wrapping up our construction documents. This is pausing that just a little bit, uh, but uh we're here to answer any questions and and thank you all.
What's your time, what's your timing for construction start and end?
Uh, it was asked that this morning, uh, and my answer on that was we anticipate commencing construction by Thanksgiving. And this isn't really a weather-dependent construction project, um, but uh we're gonna really try to stay on. I, it's on my business plan to launch it this year, for whatever that's worth, so I like to uh undersell and over-deliver. So maybe that means uh Halloween, I don't know, but objective, the objective would be in twenty-twenty-four.
Any questions on the elevations? All right, this, so we'll vote on this at the second read, but there's no need for you to show up unless you hear from staff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, which moves us to the next item, which is Agenda seven I. We do have a representative here from McLaren. Um, this is also a major adjustment, although this has gone to Plan Commission, and they have reviewed it. Uh, it's a major adjustment, as I said, for the McLaren dealership at Two Salt Creek Lane. Uh, the proposed changes, these, there's a list of seven changes, and they seem like they're, there's a long list, but they're very, very small. They're talking about landscaping around a new generator that's gonna be put in. Uh, a vertical pivot gate, because they can no longer go deep with ballards, because there's a water retention below. Um, really small changes to the F A R, but nothing material. Um, building elevations are, again, very small, and Plan Commission's always reviewed these. The one, I think, uh, point that was the most highly negotiated was the rooftop screening. Uh, originally, there were two separate screened areas that were six feet tall, it was very consistent and not tall. At the village more, board meeting on March nineteenth, applicant came in front of us with eight different screened areas, which looked like it was just all over the place. Uh, we referred it to Plan Commission, asked them to clean that up. At Plan Commission, they re, they approved all the uh, all the requests unanimously and then asked that the applicant work with Steve Cashman and staff to tighten up those uh, the screening on top. I would say Steve Cashman, who is a architect for schools, who is used to working in this, added a lot of value here, 'cause I think, you know, he he worked directly with uh the architects. Basically, what they came down to is they've got four screening areas with three screening panels at three feet six inches tall and one at nine feet two. Uh, there is a photo in here, if if um, you know, they're hard to find, but it's it's very consistent. As anyone driving down Ogden Avenue, uh, it's gonna look like it's just a normal part of the building. Um, and uh that was it. So our, as this is coming, as a referral from Plan Commission, this is a first read. Uh, and with that, I would answer any questions or open up to the applicant, maybe. Let me, let me direct the trustees to the screening, 'cause I think that's the most important one. If you go to the, on this big nice color elevation that they provided, if you go to the second to last page, in the top left-hand corner, you can see a bird's eye view of what the uh screening will look like. There's four separate blocks. Um, the bit, the part of the building that is in the back is the tallest, and then if you move, let me see, one.
So it's not as chunky looking?
Not nearly as chunky. Four. Uh. If you look at uh five pages back, you'll see the east elevation, which is the most that you would see coming down from Ogden Avenue at kind of a uh, a kind of an angle. And it's very, at this picture right here, you can see that top screening is what will be visible. And then if you go one more page forward, you can see the elevation uh at at a different part. And these are, in my opinion, just much more consistent, not an issue. Consistent with other projects we've approved. Anything to add to that?
Uh, I think you got it pretty good, I mean, really, oh, it's original, there, most of the changes you talked about, yeah, were fairly minor. Um, this was the main.
This was.
Point that had to be negotiated, figured out, so I guess, a little, a little back and forth with Steve Cashman.
Yeah, with a little back and forth with Steve Cashman and um village staff, I, I think we got to a point where we agreed um on the plan that you're seeing in front of you today.
And Rob and Bethany, anything that we've missed or should be discussed?
No, the rooftop screening was the, the sticking point. Cashman did a great job, in my humble opinion, in in helping uh the owner come up with some alternatives.
Yeah, I was on the emails that were going back and forth between Cashman and the applicant, they were architecture, I couldn't follow them, but he was, he was knee-deep into this. Questions? Issues, Tom? None?
Okay.
Uh, so we, this'll be the second read in July, but you don't need to show up unless you hear from staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
And where, where are we on the project, when you guys?
Uh, right now, um, well, we're ready to start, we're just waiting on come out for um, if there's a electrical service that needs to be relocated. I think that should be happening very shortly.
And what's your estimate on a completion date?
Um, I think we're mid, before next fall, twenty-five, so we'll be starting construction early.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So Neil, I think you have the accounts payable?
Yes, I did. Uh, found everything to be in order, had a couple of questions, which Carrie helped me out with very well. So I will make a motion to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, through June fifth, twenty twenty-four, in the aggregate amount of one million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents, as set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk.
Second. Will call vote?
Trustee Paschma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Aye.
We have a motion on consent agenda items eight B through eight G. Move to approve, move to approve consent agenda items eight B through eight G. Second. Will call vote?
Trustee Paschma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Aye.
Okay, Matt?
All right. Last but not least, water rates, item nine A. Uh, so this is the ordinance to uh increase our rates, uh, as I mentioned, uh, at the last meeting, the village buys its water, the DuPage Water Commission. Uh, the commission recently increased its rates by three point five two-five percent, so uh we are gonna do the same and and pass on that price uh increase. Um, the average uh resident bill will go up by a little over fifty dollars a year. And um the rates would go into effect uh for all new meter readings after uh this meeting, assuming we uh pass this right now. And uh, uh, the rates will first uh, first show up on, on the new July bills. The fifteen dollar flat infrastructure fee uh remains at fifteen dollars, there's no increase to that, but the other variable rates will all go up by that three point five two-five percent. Any questions? Then I will uh move to approve an ordinance amending subsection seven dash four B dash two of the Hinsdale Village Code relative to fees for water service.
Second. Will call vote?
Trustee Paschma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Aye.
Anything on the tollway?
There were residents here from Grand Mill, uh, the tollway has set up a meeting for June twenty-sixth with those residents.
Okay. We're done with the hundred, the hundred-fiftieth, anything else?
Next month, we should have some solid information.
Okay. All right, staff reports? Okay. Number one here for citizens petition, trustee comments? Sure.
Um, I wanted to say thank you to George Paluso and Rich Roan and his Public Works team. Um, last week, they helped move a very large and heavy concrete planter for the Garden Club of Hinsdale. It's now seated at the west uh side of the train station, and it was donated um in honor of Penny Bonin, so thank you, George, we appreciate it.
No reason for a closed session, can I have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned, second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Paschma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, guys, just recall, if you put your drawings underneath here, they'll put them so that.